Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to adjourn all the ordinary regular city commission meeting. City of Deerfield Beach on Tuesday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty one at seven P M. Please have a roll call.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Hornet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Preston.
Here.
Mayor Vance.
Here. You can everyone please stand for a moment of silence or question reasons. Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the States. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. As a reminder, here we can be silenced themselves. Uh, approval of our city commission meeting minutes from October fifth, October ninth, two thousand and twenty one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, approval of our acknowledgement of our city board meeting minutes for community redevelopment agency meeting minutes. August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, code compliance meeting minutes, May eleventh, May twenty sixth, June eighth, June twenty third, and July thirteenth, twenty twenty one.
I should do it for our community.
Thank you for that. Keep on going if that's all right.
Sure.
Community appearance board meeting minutes from September twenty ninth, twenty twenty one. Hillsborough Inlet District meeting minutes for September thirteenth, September twentieth, and a September twentieth budget period, twenty twenty one. Education advisory board meeting minutes, September first, October sixth, twenty twenty one. Affordable Housing Committee meeting minutes from August ninth, September fifteenth, twenty twenty one. And our planning and zoning board meeting minutes of September second, twenty twenty one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed. Okay, approval of our agenda for tonight, November sixteen, twenty twenty one. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor say.
Miss, yeah, before they start interrupt there, we did a for item number sixteen. The applicant requested that that item be postponed while they prepare some additional supplemental information for backup from city commission consideration.
Thank you, we have amended motion, will that change?
Motion to approve as a man.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Okay, that's. Thank you very much. Our first proclamation we have tonight is for the Small Business Saturday Coalition. According to United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty one point seven million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses employ forty seven point one percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. Eighty percent of U S consumers do not personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And ninety two percent of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open. More than forty four hundred small businesses, businesses located in the city of Deerfield Beach. And the city supports our local businesses to create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. The past six years, Deerfield Beach has actively promoted local shop, local programs, and endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving beginning as Small Business Saturday. By harnessing the power of the city's small business ecosystem and encouraging the population to shop local. To support our, their growth, our economy will continue to build back stronger than it was before. Falling between Black Friday and Cyber Monday, Small Business Saturdays are essential to the preservation of neighborhoods that compose the landscape of our local economy. It is rich, it's unique culture. Please join us in recognizing Saturday, November twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, as Small Business Saturday, and we encourage residents to shop small, not just on this day, but year round, supporting our community businesses. Thank you. Our next item is a proclamation for Families Against Court Travesties. In May twenty twenty one, Grayson Kessler, four year old in Fort Lauderdale, was shot in a building by his biological father during an approved court visit. Despite his father's history of abusive behavior, and his mother's pleaded to court to protect him. To help honor Grayson, the estimated fifty eight thousand children annually that are at risk due to being ordered into unsupervised, unsupervised visitation with an abusive parent by state courts. National Coalition of Organizations that estimated November is National Family Court Awareness Month. Family Court Awareness Month recognizes the importance of family court systems that fire recognizes child safety and acts in the best interest of children through increased awareness and on the importance of education and training on family violence, childhood trauma, and post separation abuse for all professionals in the family court system. City Deerfield Beach encourages all residents, worker, local communities, efforts to prevent the harm of children in the hands of family members and to honor the value of the children whose lives have been saved. We have representatives from this organization. I'd like to give you this proclamation and have Family Court Awareness Month for this month in Deerfield Beach. Absolute, go right ahead.
There again.
Is your, just need your name and address for records.
Um, Bailey Smith, um, by Saturday Jefferson Brown.
Thank you, go right ahead.
Um, there again.
Yes, that's me.
Um, on behalf of Families Against the Traps, the Florida Protective Parents, Ali Kessler, Grayson Smart, and myself. Thank you for acknowledging this proclamation claiming that November is Family Court Awareness Month. I wanted to be here personally because I am a Deerfield Beach resident. This is extremely personal as I am a domestic family survivor. I'm a mom of two young men and a teenage boy who until this day are suffering from adverse childhood experience and trauma. When at this point, we realize, realize they should be living healthy, happy, productive lives. As a protective care, my heart breaks every single day to see them in pain. This has failed us. I look at these moms around me. Young children who are going through many similarities to what I have been through over the past six years. And I can't stand by watching it happen over and over again. After all went through, I vow I would use my words and fight the truth. Groups like BACS and Florida Protective Parents are very long the same. We do not want another child die at the hands of their abusive parents like Grayson Smart. This must end now. November being Family Court Awareness Month is just beginning.
Thank you very much.
Item number three on tonight's agenda is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, adopting the amended capital improvements element of the city's adopted comprehensive plan, providing for conflict severability in an effective date. This is first reading.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commission, City City Manager, Mr. Eric Power, Director of Planning Development Services here to address this item.
All right, thank you.
Eric Power, Director of Planning Development Services, Deerfield Beach. So tonight, we have an item, our capital improvement element. This is an item, you go to the next slide. This is an item that is required by state statute to be in front of city commission every single year. The capital improvement element is a portion of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is something that we update every seven years, our capital improvement element, which is just one chapter of that plan. We update every single year to include the five year budget estimates that are part of the capital improvement plan that U S City Commission approved back in September as part of the annual budgets. Every year I come up in front of you and I say that everything in this document is exactly what is in the capital improvement plan. And nothing has changed now, or this year, that is not true. Have made additional changes. Every seven years, we do what's called the evaluation and appraisal report year that got brought to you earlier this year for review. And that is an update of the elements that looks at, say, traffic, water, wastewater, sewer, transportation, all of those things. We're on a twenty twenty five year model, now we're on a thirty year model. So all the information, backup data, the correlation data that was approved in the evaluation report is now part of this document as well. So all that backup data has been updated. So every year I say nothing else has changed for the budget. This year, budgets change and the lighting has changed, however, nothing is actually new. So that's important for me to express. There's nothing in this document that has been changed or mended to anything that you have not already approved through resolution as a condition. So if you have any questions, I mean, I can stop.
Thank you very much. Mission, do we have any questions? Let's see, anyone from the public here comment on the side? Not seeing any closer to the public.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Partes, second by Vice Mayor Preston, uh, roll call please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hornet.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Vance.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Preston, thank you.
Item number four on the agenda is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, adopting an amendment to the city budget for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Approving departmental budget transfers in the amount of one million five hundred and forty three thousand within the general fund, approving supplemental appropriations in the amount of sixty three thousand eight hundred and eighty five dollars for the nuisance payment fund, and appropriating the loan proceeds from fund balance, the Energy Performance Project Fund, in the amount of one million eight hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars. Approving supplemental budget appropriations to the Crime Prevention Fund for the seventy three hundred and fifty dollar private contribution received by the city, providing for conflict severability in an effective date, and this is second reading.
Okay, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, I don't have any further comments on site, and as we did the presentation during first reading, I'm happy to address any questions that the commission and the public may have on site.
Can you give just a very brief summary on what this is?
Sure, I may have Ms. Stephanie Tinsley come up to provide that information.
Good evening, Stephanie Tinsley, CFO of Deerfield Beach. This summary of what this amendment is for relates to an adjustment that we need to do for the FY twenty twenty one budget. We are allowed by statute to adjust the budget up to sixty days after fiscal year end due to accounting standards that require us to accrue various revenue streams as well as expenditure streams. And so part of that, as well as unexpected budget or unexpected results with our expenditures. So for example, the first part of the adjustment relates to transfers within the general fund. It does not increase the appropriation, but the law enforcement, public safety portion exceeded the budget by the amount or so roughly of the bearing of the vacancy credits that we budgeted for but was not realized due to the various recruitment that, that the law enforcement were able to do and maintain their, their folks there.
So, so this is a, you know, a roundabout way to say this adds greater transport to the general transfer. It's a new process that we're going to be doing soon. Rather than a general transport, grant transfer, you're going to make sure this true up goes into the right departments and publics where, where they're going to go based on changes that came in after the budget was closed.
Yes, you so generously.
Thank you, thank you. Just want to make sure I'm correct and saying.
Yes.
Is there anyone from the public here comment on the side? I see you want to close it to the public. I'll see even the online commission comments.
Motion to approve.
It was second. Mayor, thank you for opening that up so that the public can understand that there is always the air of transparency that must be put forward to people to understand where the money is for. There's an adjustment that needs to be made, that adjustment is being made, and that we have the people places to ensure that the decisions that are made, talking about it, it's confidence to the resident. So with that, I'll say.
Thank you, can we have a good motion and second, we have a roll call please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, we are now at the public com- comment portion of tonight's agenda. Persons addressing the commission, so states are her name and address, and may speak for three minutes unless extended for one additional minute by the mayor. This is the part of the meeting for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. If you have comment on items that are on the agenda, the time to do that is when the public comment period is, is opened up after the agenda item is called. And a reminder that no comments should be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language or sort of offend persons of ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public here to comment tonight?
I want to ask a question about the provided, you said there was something that was.
I mean, you'll have to get this out, if you want to come up to the podium, give your name and address for the record.
Sorry, this is my first meeting.
No, that's okay, that's all right.
Wait, you explained with the.
And here, I'll, I'll give you some guidance, just, just tell us your name, your address for the record.
Yeah, and Lucian Del Genio, seven oh seven, offshore drive, eighty three.
Excellent, okay, and your question is?
As far as the budget for the police, you said you added more police, or you added more maintenance to the budget?
No, I'll give you, I'll give some clarification for you on that last item. This is for items that are, that are not covered on there. You missed your opportunity to speak on that, but we'll get it, I'll get you the answer for that. That's okay. No, no, that's all right, that's right.
Thank you.
Sure, we'll get you the answer for that in a moment. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Also for the online, anyone for it then? No, probably going to close that into the public. And, uh, Ms. Tinsley, do you mind answering, I'm going to reopen the first one, that's all right?
Mayor, I can answer that question, please. So ma'am, to answer your question, there was actually, there was a deficit in the law enforcement budget due to a budgeted vacancy credit that we receive on an annual basis from the Broward Sheriff's Office when they have vacancies in their positions. Over the course of the past two to three years prior, we had realized vacancies amounting to approximately, I think somewhere around eight hundred thousand dollars. Our Sheriff's Office has been doing much better job with their recruitment efforts and filling positions in the Deerfield Beach District. So we did not realize those vacancy credits this year. That's where the deficit came from in, in the law enforcement. So it wasn't, didn't have anything to do with the hiring of, of additional officers. And those funds were, the, the, there is, there is some surplus within the Department of Recreation Department, which covered that deficit. Hopefully that answered your question.
I don't think I understood one of the deficits needs though. When people quit and there's.
So.
I'll give the man.
Sure. So with the, the Broward Sheriff's Office is required to have a certain number of officers within the district at, at a given time. And so sometimes, you know, you, you don't, you have vacancies, like in any business. So when they do have that vacancy, we don't, we don't pay for that because we, we pay it an annual contract amount. But then they reduce the contract amounts by a vacancy credit when there is an actual vacancy of a deputy in a position that we are allocated to have.
And this year, essentially, we had no vacancies, we had all the officers we were supposed to have.
We, we had some, but certainly not as many as we used to have.
So that's a matter of the numbers of budgeted regional. Once we got the correct numbers from D S L, we had to make that just. Hope that answers your question, if not, stick around, we'll, I'll get further questions. Close it to the public, go ahead. Mr. Turner, thanks, sir.
We are now at the consent portion of tonight's agenda. You have items eight through twelve, as well as the addendum items that my understanding is the intent we're adding to the consent. So it's items eight through fifteen.
Five through seven first, is that correct?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped, thank you, ma'am. Skip the board appointments, consent, board appointments, items five through seven. You want to hear those as a slate?
Uh, are there any polls from the commission for items, uh, or comments on item five, six, or seven? No? Okay. Is there anyone from the public who care comment on item five, six, or seven? Anyone ready for more? I'll see if I can come to the public and, uh, initially for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have approved, we have a motion in the second for items five, six, and seven. All in favor say aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are now at the consent agreements and expenditure requests portion of tonight's agenda. This is items eight through fifteen, including the three addenda items.
Is there anyone, uh, is there any items, questions you want to poll to discuss? Between eight, fifteens? Let's see, or hear from anyone of that, is there anyone from the public who care to comment? Either item eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, or fifteen? If so, just raise your hand unless that which ones. Not seeing any or seeing any online? Second, get out on that one. Go ahead and close it to the public, then, commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion from Mr. Vice Mayor Preston, second by Mr. Partes. We have roll call please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Hornet.
Yes.
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 Okay, item number sixteen was removed, we're on item number seventeen. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the rankings and funding allocations to charitable and public purpose organizations for the community participation grant program, providing for implementation and an effective date.
Motion to comment. Any, anyone from the public care to comment on this side? This is item number seventeen regarding our funding allocations for community participation. Give you a brief summary of what this says. We have budgeted a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for various programs from the city of Deerfield Beach and enhanced city of Deerfield Beach. And this is approval of that allocation. Allocations for the early learning, full edition of Broward County, in distress, junior achievement, kids in distress, people in community outreach, Deerfield Beach Historical Society, Bailey Central Inc., Lighthouse of Broward County, Center for Hearing Communication, and American Rescue, Blood and Water Post two weeks. Not seeing any coming forward or a line of poses to the public. Commission.
Motion to approve.
I'm going to give the motion of approval to our Vice Mayor.
Second.
Second, but Mr. Partes, I will say this staff did an outstanding job. This is usually one of the most debated items we have to come up with our budget. Clearly, there's a lot more to answer this and make sure that process goes smooth, so, thank you. We have roll call please.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mayor Hornet.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Vance.
Yes.
Item number eighteen is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the city's projects to be funded with the American Rescue Plan Act funds, providing for implementation and effective date.
Motion to comment on this? Okay. Yes. Pardon? Oh, okay.
Mayor, I made your presentation, so.
Sorry. That's okay.
I may just do an introduction on, on this. Like to welcome Representative from Government Services group. David, thank you for being here. Staff has put together a brief presentation with our consultant to go over the A R P funding strategy, or I should say expenditure strategy, and without further ado, I think, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Senator James. Mayor, Vice Mayor, President of the Commission, thank you for having me here. The director of data jobs, Government Services.
Mr. Jobs, can you move closer to my chair, I'm sorry.
No worries.
I think so, yes.
And we're here to talk about the American Rescue Plan. Go to slide number H two, please. So, have a few topics we want to talk to you about, just jump right in, next slide please. As you recall, in previous discussion, we were here several months ago, and we talked about the conceptual framework, we're now talking about the actual project list. So just as a quick recap, the American Rescue Plan was a one point nine trillion dollar economic stimulus bill. Of that one point nine trillion dollars, bill, three hundred and sixty five billion dollars allocated to state local governments throughout the U S. Of that, City of Deerfield Beach receives an allocation of about sixteen point two eight billion dollars, next slide please. And what we've done, we wanted to highlight working with city staff and working with Mr. Sanfichi. One of the things that has been a theme as it relates to the American Rescue Plan on most other cities and counties in the United States is that they really didn't feel this to be a rescue plan, but more or less a prosperity plan. So as you read the contact statement that Mr. Sanfichi provided to us, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. You know, a once in a lifetime opportunity, it's the assist spending, you know, the city's robust economic ecosystem, you know, an opportunity, economic rejuvenation, and to accelerate capital program need to provide more resilient infrastructure and public spaces. So that was really the context in terms of how we developed the list, the work of the city staff. The record did a fantastic job in terms of really helping us prepare the list for people to see. Next slide please. Just want to touch on a couple of accomplishments to date. We gone, we went through a series of initial requests, we pared that down to about thirty five items on the list. Few more items on the list than what we're getting allocated for. But as we have discussed with other clients, the story becomes a living, breathing document. We think of it more as a blindfold. Do you expect that if the rules are, are finally adopted, as other entities are competing with the same resources in terms of engineering firms and just equipment and supply chain issues, some projects may fall off, prices may change. So we want to make sure we're in a flexible plan for you. We went through with. We went through and analyzed the projects for funding viability, as well as looking at from a risk perspective, trying to get potential fallback. Uh, we wanted to keep in mind in terms of recommended projects that people thought had. Uh, high probability success, as well as having a minimum chance of being flawed back or tested before the money got to the federal. Really, we wanted to maximize your American Rescue Plan funding. And one of the other things that we did is we've identified other projects that came on the initial list that we thought the EDP there served. To a different standard of federal funding source. Uh, next slide please. Just to show you the the draft report, uh, just to cover it, I think we did provide one of the actual problem. You know, it really is seen here. It's about revive, recover and renew. Uh, after the the meeting, speaking with staff to go forward and finalize the report. Um, next slide please. You know, one of the things that we wanted to make sure of, always work with the projects, we wanted to make sure to include the risk of the project in consideration. Uh, on a four point scale, one being the lowest risk, four being the highest risk. Uh, there were a couple of projects that were a little bit more on a higher risk, we come up with some approaches that would be effective. Best use, uh, using the funds to help mitigate that risk all term and to ensure the project's success. Most of the projects that are on the list, um, are the one to two scale, uh, point range. We draw a lower risk range of potential for fallback. You know, that's one of the things that we've also done is work with the external auditor of the city, just to get a sense of what is they're going to look at. Uh, making sure that we set up a proper protocol to keep city within the guardrails, uh, to minimize any potential problems all term. Next slide please. I want to spend just a little bit of time on this, as as you can see in front of you for draft needs assessment. Uh, the total, the aggregate of the projects that were identified were about nineteen point seven nine dollars. And as I said earlier, it's a little bit higher than the sixteen point three billion or so that the city is actually allocated. But we did that potentially because these projects may or may not uh fall off the list. We want to make sure that we had enough items on there to to really be useful for identifying the needs. And based upon, uh, discussion with staff, based upon the city, you can see that by far the largest percent. Of projects that were identified fell in the category. Uh, so within the within the American Rescue Plan, that really fell within within water, sewer, wastewater, stormwater. Or broadband. Uh, so now that sixty-two percent of the total expenditures were actually identified within the structure. Within public health, about nine percent of the projects were identified to have public health implications. Whether it had to do with uh touch free monitoring, additional mobile kiosks and stuff to help provide. Uh, remote access and minimal contact. Revenue replacement, uh, identified by the, identified by eighteen percent of the total. Um, amount of projects that can be funded for revenue replacement. And then the remaining three areas under administrative expenses, economic impact. And services to disproportionately impacted communities accounted for about eleven percent of the total projects. Term expense expenditures. Um, next slide please. So the next three slides we have outlined in priority order. And the priority order uh was developed in terms of working with city staff to identify. Uh, not only the need of the project, but also considering the risk of the project. So we've actually identified the project, uh, brief description, the priority, what category and and specific. Uh, funding that was requested. So, uh, the first slide here shows the first head projects. Uh, was caused as the second, but I'll let you look over the list. Uh, next slide please. So as you can see on the second, uh, page nine here, the second of the list identifies projects eleven to twenty. Um, and you can just inform me out of the, when the public health, you know, we've talked about some of the projects that have been mitigated. Uh, touching automated hand lock, such like that, um, we go into the first slide for it. And then the final shows, uh, projects twenty-one to thirty-two. So there's actually thirty-two total projects that were identified. Uh, as well as, uh, we also had to get a fine additional funding for the administration of the program, which not only includes the city time. External staff are, you know, consulting time, but also the cost of city one regarding single audit requirements. Were there any questions on any of this specific project or?
I just have one question regarding prioritization. We have the ability to change the priority at this time, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Anytime. And as we said, this is the initial listing. Um, you know, one of the things that we we wanted to make sure that we had some flexibility on in the within the program. So, uh, right now it's an initial prioritization, but the document can now put the actual projects that would be changed.
Right. To your point is saying that the amount of projects that we have there is a dollar value. It seems more than being granted. But we've done that, you know, projects will fall off.
Yes, we we presume is that once the final rule, uh, has been enacted, we would have thought, well, before now, the final rule would have been enacted. But once that happened, we we foresee uh demand exceeding supply within the professional services industry. As well as just getting material supplies. So we think there's probably some shifting of priorities all term.
So this gives us our maximum plus ability to use this part of it.
Yes, sir.
Sure, actually have a few more questions or a couple more comments. Uh, can we sure do that? Make sure do that.
You good now?
Yep.
Perfect. Um, if you could put up the slides, um, just, I guess it was slide number nine when we talked about. Uh, our, our, our list of projects. I I I, oh, there we go. Good. So what I've noticed, uh, is is that you did not include the risk factor. And I guess my question is, like, project number seven has a risk factor of four. Um, a- and I would think we need to to take those into consideration as well. Uh, when we're looking at um spending and allocating these resources. If you can discuss a little bit about the, the, the increased challenges of. Of doing a project with a risk of a, of a four, as opposed to doing one that does risk worth of two, which is projects eight, nine and ten. I would appreciate it.
Certainly. Great question. Uh, so. Looking at a project with a score factor of two, um, from a process and procedural standpoint. We're still going to go through the same procedural safeguards and go through the same processes, procedures, documentation standards that are required. From a project manager perspective and working with, obviously, finance department with the external orders to meet their expectations. Um, when you're dealing though with a project of a four as compared to a one or two, uh, we usually believe that there's a piece of additional supporting documentation. Whether it's business case, it's a, a little bit more of an explanation. Um, in terms of being able to provide the story and and the rationale to the conclusion that was, that was reached. Um, as it relates to why you felt that was appropriate and within the guidelines. Uh, we did that way, you know, based on current guidelines, the risk factors may actually change somewhat after the final calling. Uh, but, uh, the biggest thing is that the higher the risk, the greater amount of documentation. Over time in terms of staff and outside time, outside consultant time in terms of being able to provide the situation. To really make sure that we've got all the bases up. Uh, but all the projects will have the same quality assurance check, the same process procedures. But higher the risk, we want to make sure that we be a lot of work and more time for, um, additional documentation standpoint.
So that risk rating could change depending on the information that we have on.
Yes, it could potentially change if, if doing right now that the guidelines are structured. If they allow for more general type of infrastructure, uh, would be one way where the risk potentially would go down. Uh, if there are projects that are a little bit higher, we can have a couple of higher risk projects that. We feel that it's best to use the revenue replacement funds, uh, because once you claim under the regular replacement with current. Program guidelines, we're ready to have more flexibility in terms of general government expenditures. So you have a bit more, uh, opportunities to fund projects that may be higher risk. So right now, what we're trying to do is the layout, or you're saying, oh, here are the projects here, where the risk factor is. Um, and then that way if things change, we can come back and modify, um, the report. We didn't put the risk ratings within today's presentation, that the risk ratings are included within the report itself. Um, as well as the dependencies of the report that was the project's part of the report.
Yes, thank you. Um, can we sure do that? Cause that answers your question.
Uh, so the bottom line is, is this risk is basically whether or not the city is actually going to get the funds for a specific project. We, and the higher the risk, the, the, the greater the chance that we would not get the reimbursement. Is that correct?
Well, no, it it actually, you're going to get, you already have half the money now. So the way that the, the program works, it's a little bit different. Than a reimbursement based program. Uh, the challenge could be is that at some point in the future. Uh, a federal auditor could come in and conduct an external audit, similar to like a FEMA vice review, a program review or a city review. And come back and then quote what they use called a question, a question pause, and then go through the process and. Meaning that you'd have potentially paid back. So that's the reason why we want to make sure that everyone's aware of what potential risks are on the front.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Richard Grossky.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Um, I I'd like to ask the consultant. Uh, and we talked about it in in a meeting that we had in the, in the lead up to the meeting tonight. Um, is that on Monday, you know, the president signed the federal infrastructure bill. And whether that has any impact on his analysis of the ranking of the projects for tonight. What we discussed in my meeting leading up to tonight was that the setup of the federal dollars. Is more on a competitive kind of grant basis. So there's no guarantee you're going to get, you know. Any dollars toward any one particular project. So in this format, using the American Rescue Fund Plan dollars. You know, we're guaranteed to accomplish the infrastructure projects that are at the top of our list. So for example. The first two projects on the list are for three point nine million dollars. That three point nine million dollars of, um, American Rescue Fund plans are potentially funds that we could get from the infrastructure bill. The federal infrastructure bill and use that three point nine million elsewhere. However, that's a very calculated. Risk, because there's no guarantee out of the infrastructure bill that we would get that three point nine million based upon the competitive process. So. My question is, I I think I've stated it correctly. Does the, does the consultant's analysis, uh, has it changed since this past Monday of the signing of the bill?
Yeah, the short answer is no. The reason why is that the, the initial rulemaking moment of the. Bipartisan infrastructure deal, that rulemaking information probably won't come out until January. Uh, I believe the president said, you know, sixty days, uh, which could be late January or February. Um, Commissioner Grossky, as you clearly pointed out, it's going to be more of a competitive pace. Um, rather than an allocation where now the city has the, has a dedicated funding stream for the American Rescue Plan. Um, we, we do believe that more, state of Florida itself will get about thirteen billion dollars. In additional funding through the bi- uh, the bipartisan infrastructure bill. But we don't know how that's going to be allocated, but if it will be allocated, uh, or when it will be allocated down. Uh, the, the benefit of the, the plan and the way that we're recommending the implementation of the, of the project plan. Is that if something does change in six months, you have the ability to modify course. And pursue a different funding stream. So the benefit with the American Rescue Plan is that we have essentially three years. Um, or the end of twenty twenty-four to moving up of the projects you're going to. Then you have until twenty twenty-six actually. So if something does drastically change, uh, either in terms of the rulemaking piece of the. Bipartisan infrastructure field and getting major changes within the final role of the American Rescue Plan. Who will have funding about the time that provides on the visit plan to meet the changes.
Excellent. Thank you. Richard Grossky, does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Parnas.
Yeah, my question is this, this nineteen million dollars. Um, we're free to spend it with approval based on what you submit. Let us assume we take an item like the stormwater in the western part of Deerfield. We submit a plan, et cetera, et cetera. The money will be made available immediately for that project if they approve it.
There is no formal approval process. You've already been allocated, and I believe all the work after Mr. Sanfichi. But the cities are receiving source of allocation of funding. Uh, the only requirement is, is you have to go through the process. To validate city as an eligible entity. When we go through that normalized process. You sign the agreement with the US Treasury, receive fifty percent of the money, I think sometime back in the day. Within twelve months of that first date of your second allocation of funding. So there is. Based on the government exercise, you don't have to submit a formal plan to the US Treasury for approval. Um, you do have to go through the processes you normally would in terms of appropriate capital expenditure for, uh. Purchases that go beyond your normal retirement limits. Um, and because this is several funding. One of the things that we have seen, um, as it started with the CARES Act, is for you to have a plan. Uh, we think it's a, a best practice, similar to how you go through the budgeting process, to have a plan, how you're going to identify priorities, needs. And then we all have an agreed forward against common set goals.
And so if I, if I could elaborate just a little bit, Commissioner Parnas, you know, there's a multitude of layers of approval as it relates to this. One was the fact that we, you know, we created a separate, uh, account for this, uh, and a separate fund that was approved through the budget process. Uh, we did receive the first tranche of money, which was half of the allocation. And here we are again. Uh, bring forward a resolution or approval of the expenditure plan. So that's another layer of approval. And then these individual projects are going to come forth to the city commission for approval. And of course, within that item, it will be recognized as an ARP funded project.
So the federal government is going to fund these projects?
They already have.
Yeah. And so we can go ahead and and.
We can start extending as soon as we have.
Fine. Thank you. That answers my question.
And just to summarize what we have here is. We're giving this amount of money. We've got half of it right now, as I understand. Um, we have certain criterias that have to fit. We can't just take any project in the city and put that up there. They have to be certain criteria. In other words, what's allowed. When we talk about risk, risk means. Projects that potentially could be interpreted down the road as being not eligible as funded.
Correct.
Okay. And being here for fourteen years, sitting up here, I've seen that happen one time. And it actually predated me, but I think FEMA had given us approval on a, some funding from a hurricane reimbursement. They originally said we could go forward with, and five years later they came back and said, oh, you actually couldn't use that money despite the fact that they originally said yes. So only risk, risk is a scary term. Talk about risks. You, you hear the term risk. This means, is there anything in here that might come back later and potentially say, you know what? You shouldn't use that funding for this. You'll have to make that yourself. And that's, that's where the risk rating comes in, correct?
Correct. And and in trying to take on, you know, understanding the city has its fiduciary responsibilities and the money. So our approach is to be more conservative when looking at it from a risk perspective. Um, and. Maybe somewhat overstated and understated here on the side, but mainly it's a caution, exactly what you said, which is. As sometimes the agencies will practice, they will say you can do something and then they might come back and you can't. So. And we're just trying to take all those potential variables.
No, that's, that's why we have you guys here as the experts, because it's, as usual with governments, it's clear it's a lot. Actually, those are, so we appreciate. Actually, rules are, so we appreciate that. Is there anyone from the public that could comment aside? Moving closer to the public then, uh, commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion from Commissioner Partes. Second, Mr. Back. Your call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Item number nineteen is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the ranking in a word of request for proposals number twenty one dash thirty seven TC for the west water treatment plant, chlorine conversion project. Authorizing execution of an agreement with the top ranked responsive and responsible contractor, Inter County Engineering, Inc., for an amount not to exceed two million, four hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred ninety dollars, providing for implementation and effective pay. Thank you. And I do want to point out that this, this project that is actually on the list, um, and obviously would have heard it otherwise, but this is an ARP funded project.
Commission, any comments, part of the public? Uh, you're from the public, you're a comment on this side. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Gwen Clark, Reed, fourteen thirty, Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield Beach. I was trying to get my hand up to get in on the last item on the agenda, but, uh, since this item seems to be related to what was previously presented to us, my question is, when these items are funded through the American Rescue Plan, how do we know that the money is actually there? I heard you say that we received half of the funding in, um, earlier this year. Will that funding be used to do this entire project and take it off the list? Or will we have to wait until we get more funding to complete the project?
Thank you. We'll give an answer for you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this side? So, uh, closing to the public, just answer you can answer.
Yes, uh, the ARP funding is, is available to fully fund this project.
And we will not have to, we, second round of, no, we, we won't, we will not. Okay. Thank you. All right. Mission.
Motion to approve.
I have a question. I have a quick question.
Okay.
Thank you. So, uh, and I'm glad you brought this up. So the, the funding for this project is, is two point five million dollars. Now we've allocated two point eight million in, in, in the, the previous item. So those extra funds can go to, to other projects if, if this doesn't go over. Is that correct? Is that how that works?
Yes, Commissioner. I mean, it, the, these are the projects that are in the ARP expenditure plan are estimates. And so, yes, we're going to have projects that come in under budget. Um, I hope we don't have too many, but I'm sure we will have some projects that come in over budget. We just recently, uh, closed bids on our, um, on our core innovations, which you can see as part of this as well. So, you know, there's going to be some, some, there's going to need to be some flexibility in, in, in the plans we indicated in the, in the presentation.
Thank you very much. Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Partes. That's a second. You should do that. Your call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Item number twenty is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, adopting the city of Deerfield Beach Stormwater Management, Flood Resiliency Strategies Master Plan, providing for an effective pay. Thank you, Mayor. For this evening, we have, uh, our Director of Environmental Services, Professor Jomlik, and our consultants, uh, with GeoSynTech here to provide the presentation on the stormwater and flood resilience master plan.
Hi, good evening. Professor Jomlik, Director of Environmental Service. As of tonight, we just want to do a quick recap of some of the workshops that were conducted, uh, over the past few months with the public. Um, and we are, uh, requesting your, uh, approval tonight on the stormwater master plan so we can see, uh, with using this master plan as a roadmap to our future. Turn it over to, um, Mark Eller, uh, with GeoSynTech, and he will take us through the phone.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Good. Um, Mayor Gans, commissioners, thank you for having me here, uh, this evening to do another review of the master plan. It's a project we've been working on quite some time, and we're bringing it to a close here. Uh, advance. So in summary, why do we need this, this plan? There are many important things that go into a stormwater management plan, master plan for a city such as Deerfield Beach. Um, first and foremost, the city operates and maintains the stormwaters, the collection of stormwater runoff, which in turn benefits the properties in this, in the city in many ways we talked about. But the stormwater infrastructure over time, it ages. So it's just like anything, you need to replace it every time. So there's a, a, a old and new. You have a lot of aging infrastructure like Deerfield Beach, particularly in some of the eastern areas, it needs replacement. Stuff that is new now, the infrastructure that's new now will eventually be replaced. So there's a cycle of keeping that stormwater infrastructure up to date. And that's very important because it's a public health and safety, global issue. Because as you know, just managing regular rainfall may be very efficient with infrastructure, but extreme storm events that cause flooding issues are a serious, you know, issue. Only for traffic, but you can backstop homes and property. There's also the idea of surface water quality as well and how that can be great as the runoff makes its way to receiving waters around the city. There's also various regulatory requirements that a city is required by the MS four, per the state, through different water quality regulations, other items. Uh, and some of them affect the, the, the insurance premiums that clothes shirts, uh, carries in the city. All this, uh, managing the regulations and the operations maintenance system, maintenance of stormwater system, far as proper planning and an assessment to understand how it's working and what we improve to in order to have a proactive, uh, system. Regulatory environment is constantly changing. Uh, different regulations come up to that are, that the city has to comply with and meet. In fact, just this year, House Bill fifty-three, which is now requiring twenty-two needs assessment, both cities and counties throughout the, uh, state, around the stormwater program, which we focus on here, but also what is focused. And the, that's the big thing about a plan is without a plan, how do you know what to use to fund the priority of improvements, uh, to put into the city? You have this citywide public benefit. Having a plan allows you to move forward with that. Excellent. Operations and maintenance of the system is critical. As I mentioned, there's an enormous amount that the folks have to do, day in and day out, to manage stormwater infrastructure. This slide just takes a snapshot of a few statistics around the city. And the table on the right types of stormwater infrastructure that have to be maintained. There's over nearly three thousand stormwater inlands. There's over forty-five thousand feet of exfiltration. Like all these things need to be inspected, maintained to make sure that they're working properly. The table on the bottom is this snapshot, different types of activities that the inspection and operations maintenance need to do. With mowing, uh, uh, clearing out pipes, fixing structural and all of these systems, all which requires a lot of resources, personnel and equipment resources. There's other items that fall under the operation maintenance. There's various procedures to be, uh, followed to keep in line with the different regulatory requirements and even the street sweeping program throughout the city. That's one of the best ways that, uh, to keep sediments out of the infrastructure system and also help, uh, uh, improve water quality, which is before they get to the, uh, receiving waters. So very important that this is, is, uh, done in a proactive way. And a plan helps to take a, take a look at it. What's going on now and make recommendations from it. Excellent. Regulatory compliance, as we mentioned before, there's a nu- number of regulatory issues the city has to deal with. And you can start with a comprehensive plan and code that manages the development and what happens as far as, uh, stormwater designs that happen. There's a lot that goes into making sure ensuring, uh, systems are current for both, only city regulations, but, uh, county water management regulations. There's the states and BDS and MS four permits, stormwater permit that municipalities are required to have managed, successfully managed their stormwater permits. Number of checklists, standard operating procedures and requirements that our city has to comply with, uh, for that. Increasingly, there are water quality regulations, service water quality regulations passed out from the state, uh, that help protect the receiving waters. As you know, runoff, most all the runoff from the state goes out to the hillsboro or the intercoastal. So protecting those sense of water quality resource is important. Floodway management is, is important. I mentioned the community ratings system, having a good stormwater plan in place actually helps to, um, impacts the insurance premiums that folks that do have flood insurance have. And other things, as I mentioned, that are, are coming up, that are, that are now being, you know, beginning to see that are new this year, putting on the House Bill fifty-three. All these regulations, take a lot of resources and time to apply. Excellent. So where are we in the program? I need you to snapshot of why, I need you to snapshot why, why we are, uh, where we're at. But here's a little bit of history. The stormage utility program was initiated in October two thousand eighteen. It's the program that funds maintenance repair, equipment and capital improvements, not only maintaining the system, but providing improvements to, to fix, replace infrastructure. Our master plan efforts here were initiated back in October of nineteen, bringing us to this, this day here. Initial master plan public meetings, if you may recall, were done last year, that was time. Just got a lot of great input from the public. They were able to leverage the master plan. One unfortunate thing for the city that happened about that time was to receive FEMA flood mitigation assistance funds to move forward with project concepts, one in each district. Uh, and you saw two of the, on the top list of the American Rescue Fund, uh, uh, funding in the previous presentation. Those are important because those are the ones that takes concepts and ideas that we have in the master plan and take four areas further, get them, get them closer and be able to implement. So the next steps that we're at here is, as Chris always mentioned, adopting the plan and that opens the door to see additional grants and move forward for America. Excellent. So what is a stormwater resiliency plan? Really covers everything to do with stormwater management, stormwater system, what happens with stormwater and from both flooding and water quality and resiliency standpoint. We get a chance to evaluate the city's coastal infrastructure, determine future needs. So take a snapshot of what's hap- what's happened in the past, what's going on now, what needs to happen in the future. Additional flooding, which is what people see the most of, and water quality, which folks can appreciate, um, uh, quality that needs to, uh, be maintained in the receiving water. There's also a lot of ideas resilience, where things that are changing in the future, like sea level rise and other issues with more intense rainfalls. How does the system going to respond to those stresses in the future? So the way we address that is assess the current condition of things, then look at, uh, capital improvements that can be recommended to make the city in a better, more resilient position in the future. And all this provides those strategies for moving forward for the next, uh, ten plus years. I'll touch real quick on the main elements. First is flooding assessments, the thing that people see the most. Um, there's a couple of pictures here after some storm events that happened last, last year. This is what you don't want to see. The storm on master plan gives an opportunity to look, look at problem areas and be able to develop, uh, solutions and concepts that can move forward. So what we do is we take a comprehensive look at, as I said, the past, present, future. The past, we, uh, gather up information from chronic complaint areas of flooding that the city knows about. If the city's had problems, we, we listen to the public, get a lot of input from flooding areas, people telling us streets that have, uh, flooded, compile that all together to look at some target areas throughout the city that, and start looking at recommendations of some flood improvements. One of the tools we use in this study is hydrologic and hydrology modeling tools, which are some computer simulations to see what would happen during, sort of design, storm events, ten year storm or twenty-five or a hundred. See how the city responds. That as well helps us to identify problem areas to be able to focus on. And all this feeds into the idea of looking at where's problem areas are, where the worst ones, where's other ones that come up. If you want to be able to target and program this for some capital improvement. Excellent. This is a quick snapshot of some of the data that we're talking about. On the left is a mapping of known flooding areas. These are these, uh, purple areas that the city knew that have chronic issues. They're responding to complaints there a lot. But we also, as you see, a lot of the orange areas, this is a drainage plant, it's like filed over a hundred and thirty of them. Now it's listening to public. Plane logs, the city app, information that we got during the public meetings. Map that out to be able to target this. Another important aspect of the flooding is just knowing where the infrastructure is. There's an enormous amount of drainage infrastructure throughout the city. The inlets, that's the pipes, that's the stormwater ponds. A large amount of it is city maintained, which is important because that's what this, as a resource is maintained. But there's also a lot of private, uh, stormwater infrastructure as well. Stormwater doesn't know municipal boundaries, so we need to take into account the public and private, the overall picture of how they interactally work with each other. So the picture on the right is just a snapshot of part of the city. You can see the, uh, dots and, and lines that show the complexity of this as a drainage. Excellent. As I mentioned, the model, we did the hydrologic and hydrolog model, citywide, focused, uh, primarily in the city maintain areas, again, that overlap with the private areas. The idea of being able to simulate what would happen during these extreme storm events to help target areas. What we did with this was do a level of service analysis, what we talked about, which is simply identifying where infrastructure is or may be failing its design infrastructure. Again, those turn into targets for potential problem, uh, capital projects. Excellent. Flooding is what folks see a lot of very, it's important these days, is surface water quality. It's been an opportunity during the master plan also with the surface water quality. And water, stormwater generally in the city, either the hillsboro, the intercoastal, and Brower Water Control. But it's important that, and you talk about water quality, because as the rain hits the ground and picks up pollutants, metals, nutrients and things that can get into receiving waters and product. There are a lot of treatment ponds and treatment mechanisms, but some of the older areas existed before some of those permanent requirements required. So you have an opportunity to take a little snapshot of the city, look at the water quality, uh, issue of some, uh, runoff situation where there was a treatment already, where some, again, projects may be recommended and necessary to improve stormwater quality. Again, those serve as the basis for capital improvement. Excellent. A third big area that we looked at as far as infrastructure was the coastal resources. Um, as you, as you know, stormwater was the finest way to enter coastal, the hillsboro, is the various outfalls, most of them piped outfalls. So it's very important that those are operating properly to drain runoff from, from the land. So now opportunity to go and do an inventory. This is pictures, some of the various outfalls here in this picture, some good and some kind of poor condition. The idea was to look at which ones may need to be recommended for some boots. Again, that programs into basis for capital improvement. So the culmination of looking at all these areas, looking for these areas that need improved flooding, water quality, the push resilience, all tied together into a recommendation for a, a, a schedule of capital projects. So we put together a prioritized list grouped by the flooding, by the water quality, surface water quality, by the coastal resources, put them in a capital project. Did analysis over a ten year period of, of how we may be sequenced in priority order, uh, to implement over the planning period. And the total that you see here is just under nineteen million dollars need that we identified for a ten year period. It's almost, uh, a couple of million dollars a year if you average it out over, over ten years, which is significant, significant, uh, SCAP project. Now, the importance of this is not only having a plan, having a list, but once you have a plan and a list, then it's, it's easier to go and start identifying the sources of outside grants and funding, which we heard a lot about. I hear tonight some of the fortunate, uh, funding that's coming in for this project. So having that plan helps facilitate that. Excellent. The projects that you saw on the list, just real quickly, these dots on the map here show where those projects are located. Really the take home message here is they are spread throughout the cities, the orders, and some of the newer areas and some of the recent districts. Now, I alluded to the city was fortunate enough to get FEMA flood mitigation grant funding. Way that fell out was identify one project per district, really the priority flowing problem, project area or district. This is a map of the city that shows the four projects that were identified. Eighth Avenue and District One, West Deerfield, here in District Four. Specifically, we're to the top projects on the previous presentations list. And also the MLK area, that corridor, drainage improvements there, and then some drainage improvements in the Crystal Lake Forty Fifth Street area. And so what we're doing on these is during a master plan, usually concepts with ideas, puts a cost to them. Quite in the capital improvement list, but this allows us to take a step further into thirty percent concept design, actually. The pencil to paper a little bit, or flush these out a little bit, or get more accurate on the cost and the projection, get them further on the process. And with that, that was a snapshot overview of the master plan process that we've been involved in and love to answer any questions.
You know, okay, sewers collect rainwater. Where does it wind up?
A lot of it, a couple of places, a lot of the interconnected pipes, so they'll make, they'll lead either the Hillsborough River or the intercostal or Brower Water Control District. State towards the southwest. There are areas in the city that also have exfiltration pipes, underground infiltration pipes, which collect the runoff and infiltrate it in place, just right where it is. So in general, those are the ways that the stormwater runoff.
Okay, so part of the city, it soaks into the ground and part of the city has runoffs. Or it runs into the intercostal or Hillsborough River or wherever. Okay, and do we have grates on top of the sewers that collect the water to keep debris out?
Yes, in general, standard design requirement of stormwater inlet or curb inlet is to have a grate for safety purposes and also, as you say, to keep large trash and breeze out.
I, I've seen some demonstrations of like a screen to keep all the debris out. And, and some areas, have we tried that?
Madam, refer to Priscilla, I will say one thing. The screening is a challenge because at the same time you want to keep the breeze out, you want to make sure stormwater can get in.
No, I understood.
Yeah, typically filter stocks, these are filter stocks are used as a temporary measure if they maybe have disturbing, you know, disturbance flow, disturbance activity. In one area in particular in the city of CCC, we do have them installed that are half based because we do have regular sanitation trucks that go out there, so those we do keep filter socks on. However, in practice, we don't want to keep them on all of our inlets because as Mark Keller alluded to, we want to make sure the stormwater does drain and what it does tend to do is it captures the debris and then the debris itself makes it makes it difficult for stormwater to get to the inlet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drossing.
Thank you, Mayor. I, excuse me, first would like to thank GeoSynTech for all their hard work on this project. This is, we got our money's worth when we, when we hired them to consult on this stormwater management plan. Because this isn't the first time this is coming up before the public, this is actually the fifth time that it's coming up. Each district had a, its own workshop with the stormwater plan, proposed stormwater plan. And then, and then I had a, you know, private meeting with the consultant before tonight. So this is actually my sixth time seeing this presentation. So there's opportunities, you know, that the public could have participated in addition to, to tonight. But saying that, like the ARP funds that we discussed not too long ago, there's more projects on this list than we have money. I mean, as we all know, the stormwater fee, which is on your monthly water bill, went into effect, I believe, two thousand seventeen was the first year, so really hasn't had a lot of time to build up big dollars unlike other cities. For example, you know, Pompano Beach, which has had that fee for, for decades. So we really don't have a huge pool of money to spend going forward. But I think that this is essential, and we've said it for a long time now, that it's imperative that we have this stormwater management plan going forward. Because it gives us the roadmap of what we need to concentrate on. For example, it's identified the areas in our city where we have flooding issues and we know, I mean, we can visually see where some of those are, and that's why they're high on the list. And there's other areas that are potentially prone or could be prone to flooding or need stormwater management strategies. And those are now on the list as well. So I think we've identified the projects and the problems that we have in the city. And this is a good map, a good roadmap, excuse me, going forward to give us an ability to tackle those, those projects. We're not going to accomplish this list in, in, in one year, this is going to take many years. In fact, I think it's a ten year, it's either a seven or a ten year plan for this list, but it's, it's a long time. And there's a lot of dollars that are involved, but I'm in favor of, of now, instead of us guessing and owing dollars where the problems are. Now we know where they, now we know where they are, we can go forward in kind of a reasoned manner going, and we're able to see where the problems are and, and, and really tackle them in an efficient manner going forward. So I'm in support of this, and I just wanted to speak to, to that point. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice President.
I don't know how aggressive our staff have been in getting this information to get out to our residents, but we should make certain effort, make sure that they have this information. When you sit and see the water level as high as a water height, that tells you we have issues dealing with the anti-quicked system. A, a system that is it is just inadequate. And to have a plan in place, though it may not be as best as someone like to address these issues. As these issues are resolved, you will see more confidence in our residents about dealing with this. Because when you have this overplanning, and I've seen it, and you have mapped it out all over the cities, is important that we have a plan placed aggressively. And though it may take some about to convince you to accomplish, it's important to start the process. So I just think that we need to get this out, I don't know how many people now, but know what we just talked about today. And, and if they knew, I think it would feel a little bit more secure about a problem that they actually have tomorrow. So getting information out to the public is very important, very important. So I would like the proper staff back away of sharing this information with everyone.
Mr. Hurd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually want to commend staff. I, I know that this has been communicated throughout the city for the last year and a half. And, you know, to have all the workshops that we've had and to get the citizens' input. I know in District One, we've had a lot of input. And I really appreciate the, the residents coming out and expressing their input. I, I honestly feel that if the residents didn't provide the input, especially those residents on Southeast Eighth Avenue, I don't know that that project would have been as priority as it is and that everybody knows about it. And, and that's not just because of staff, but that's because the residents on that particular street made it a point to make sure that they attended these meetings and were very vocal in, in their support of not only these projects, but also the, the challenge that they face. So I, I personally want to thank staff for their aggressiveness in making sure that residents were aware of these meetings. And that we addressed the, the challenges that at least the residents in District One brought up. So I really appreciate staff's help and I do appreciate District One residents for voicing their opinion and helping bring these projects to light. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hurd. Is there anyone from the public care column inside?
I'm Clark Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Gwen Clark Reed, fourteen thirty, Southwest Sixth Way, Deerfield Beach. Mayor, at the meetings that were held by, in the districts, the, at least I can speak to District Two, the meeting that I attended, we gave suggestions to the to the city as to what we saw as needs for our, for the district and where we, you know, really saw problems. So I'm hoping that as we move forward, we will know that some of these things are being taken care of. Because when we asked about the monies that had been collected in this stormwater fee and where they had been used, the monies that had been collected all seem to have been used in District One to satisfy some of their needs in the district. I want to know about the CRA dollars. Those CRA dollars, are any of those dollars used in these projects? Or is there a portion of the money that's used? Because they, in the CRA area, they have an abundance, as one might say, of dollars. So are any of their dollars being put into some of these projects so that monies can be spent elsewhere?
Thank you, Ms. Clark Reed, we'll get some answers for you. Is there anyone else from the public care column? Come on up to the microphone, please.
Thank you. Billy Lane, two over days in Century Doors. I, you know, having been in Florida as long as I have, there's this responsibility of the citizens to be aware of what's going on in their streets. And in particular, I'm not patting my back at doing it, but I can tell you, in the last five years, I was up at a, at a storm sewer break at least twenty five times. Because you get buildup of palms, of leaves. And in the village, we have lots of trees and they're dropping leaves all the time. And I understand the screening would be probably good with light stuff. But if you're having consistent rain over, let's just say a couple of days. And I, and I see people, they just like, just drive fast through it. And it's not so good. And it builds up. And I just find it as a citizen to be more aware of that. And, you know, it's the good of the whole. And sometimes it's not a fun job, but it's satisfying to see. It's raining real hard, I cleaned it the other day and it's going away. So anyway, I just wanted to put that in, that it's just not responsibility of the commissioners or the staff. You know, you got to take it, you got to take responsibility sometimes yourself. And I, I find that, that, that kind of action. And, you know, I've had people, why do I bother doing that? Because it's not that it bothers me, I just think it's the right thing to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anywhere else from the public care column? Out some of my closest to the public then. Uh, Mr. Gilner, can you answer some of the questions that were proposed, or actually city management questions regarding CRA? Now, some of, I know some of that funding does do to do those projects there, does we do the CRA is just one, is the entire district about that?
Correct, Mayor, and, and anytime that CRA does perform a, a project that addresses some street improvements, for example, Hillsborough Boulevard, Ocean Way, they're coming out of mobility project, stormwater is, is addressed in, in a particular instance.
But we can't just use CRA funding just to build a stormwater project, that's one of the project title.
It's correct.
If the recommendations made in public process is taken into consideration for priorities.
Yes, and we, we do take, even when we get phone calls about particular flooding issues, we document those and we add them to our, to our list. And as indicated through the presentation, you can see the various red dots listed in the various districts. And if there's a particular area of interest from this read that you'd like to see if we have it on our list, we'd be happy to have that communication with her and to verify that over.
I, I think, I, I will say that in the public input process of this, the feedback that I got is outstanding. You know, they did a great job, they were glad that we were looking for this project and how, and how the whole process took place. So excellent job, staff on doing that, taking public input on it. And, and I, I will say this is based on priority and need where it is. This isn't about one district over another fighting over who got what. This is about the priority of the city as a whole, this impacts the entire city. And that, that's how it's being addressed, so thank you for that. Um, mission, I think, promotion is one.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion from Commissioner Arness, signed by Vice President Preston, call please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I don't remember. Item number twenty one is a resolution of the City Commission, the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving a change order in the amount of one million sixty three thousand dollars to provide additional banquet space for the design build construction of the Johnny L Tignor Community Center project for a total project cost of ten million one hundred and seventy nine thousand five hundred and forty seven dollars and two cents, providing for execution and an effective date.
Thank you. Once again, I have Mr. Gilner to provide the presentations.
So Jill, no problem, I promise not to butcher your hand anymore, at least.
Sorry, that's why I knew I could solve this, okay. Good evening, so it's a galley for our first hour and all. And so I've been here previously, I took permission to ask for recommendations to pursue the contract on the Tignor Center through the course of some public workshops. It came to the city's attention that the unity was advocating for larger banquet space. So we went back to the awarded design builder and asked them what that would look like. And they provided us with a space plan for the Johnny L Tignor Center, which included that larger aggregated space and the support space that would be required for that larger banquet space. They, the design builder has committed to being able to provide all of the improvements for you on this slide for an amendment of one million sixty three thousand dollars. And that would incorporate the additional space needed to have up to three hundred and fifty person capacity within the multipurpose banquet room. As indicated in, in prior presentations to this commission, when we aggregate space to the first floor, we also have to aggregate that equal amount of space second floor because the exterior wall is a very, very small. I do believe the architect might be online, so I'm going to defer to him so he can actually speak to the banquet space and the aggregated support space if I think available.
So Mr. Zachary?
Yes, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you for allowing me to talk to you again. So last time we were there, we talked about the expansion, there were some questions, Mayor, you had brought up regarding the, the size of the banquet and the warming kitchen and what was the ideal expansion. And what we did was we went back and we looked at the storage capacity for all the And what we did was we went back and we looked at the storage capacity for all the tables, chairs, stage, dance floor, podium, all those things that are required to run a proper banquet facility, as well as additional warming devices in the catering kitchen for the number of meals. So all of that was provided in here. We went from in in the banquet storage, of course, we didn't have one off to the side next to the the catering kitchen. So that went from zero to three hundred and sixteen square feet. And then the warming kitchen also grew from three hundred and thirty-one square feet to four hundred and fourteen square feet. So we believe that, you know, this serves the city well as far as providing the adequate facilities to the size of banquet room itself, as well as storage and catering facilities that you can have functions properly in that space. Next slide, please. Okay, and on the second floor, the the exterior wall grew the same twelve feet. And what we did there was we also added additional storage to the camp and multipurpose rooms, as well as having additional storage for classrooms, staff offices along the corridor to to ensure that the facility can function properly long term. So there there is additional assembly space as well as additional storage space provided on that second floor. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Commissioner Arness.
To make it very simple, quote a movie, one of my favorites, Field of Dreams, build it and they will come. We're gonna redo the Tignor Center. Let's do it right the first time. We're adding the space, we're opening it up to this whole city and the surrounding area to do functions in a beautiful new hall. I've attended many functions there over the years. And I believe in the future of Deerfield Beach. It's been growing very nicely in the last number of years and will continue to do so. So let's do it right the first time. It would cost us a tremendous amount of money to try to add on later on. It's better to do it right, right from the beginning, build it, be done with it, because I really believe, like I said, if you build it, they will come. I support the expansion.
Thank you, Commissioner Arness, Commissioner Drosky.
Thank you. Pardon me. Thank you, Mayor. I I appreciate it. I I think the premise of build it, they will come is is only, you know, half the story here. And 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 I'm not in favor, I am in favor of the the renovation of the Tignor Center. It is sorely needed. That's that's not in debate tonight. The debate is whether to spend an extra million dollars of the taxpayers' dollars to expand the facility. And I fully understand the argument that now is the time, if you're going to expand it, to do it rather than build it and then later down the road when it's probably more expensive and and more prohibitive to do so, to spend the dollars then. I I I fully understand that argument. But if you're going to expand it now, there needs to be some data, there needs to be some premise for why we're spending an extra million dollars of the taxpayers' dollars to do this. And the data just simply is not there to support this expenditure. It's not there at all. I mean, this has been a very data-driven commission that's been very cognizant of the taxpayers' dollars that we are spending. And the data just does not support this. For example, we asked Pompano Beach, how many people are you getting from Deerfield Beach? The argument was, you know, that Deerfield Beach is losing events to Pompano Beach because they have a larger facility. And we asked Pompano Beach, and they're getting very few Deerfield Beach events down in Pompano. City staff did an examination and said, how many events would hold a bigger room that that's what being anticipated by this project? And the answer came back is two. I just don't get it. I just don't get it how we're spending a million dollars when the data to do so is just not there to support it. We have eighty-plus thousand residents in our city that we have to be stewards of their tax dollars. And and to do this without that data and just a premise of build it, they will come, not knowing if they're going to come, without even without analyzing if anybody's gonna come, without looking to see if anybody's gonna come, we're just throwing it up in the air saying, hey, they might come. Let's spend an extra million dollars. That, to me, just does not make any fiscal sense whatsoever. I'm in support of the Tignor project, but I'm not in support of an extra billion dollars basically on an expansion to nowhere. So I I'm going to be against this.
Thank you. I'm gonna throw my two cents on this. My initial inkling on this was not to expand it. We're already expanding this this center to meet our current needs. And it was long overdue and well needed. We had people complaining at the time, why are they doing this? They shouldn't be doing this, which is ludicrous. I think most of those people who made those comments probably never stepped foot in the Tignor Center. And I think anybody who's been any time in there as the air conditioning failed or we had rooms built beyond the past would know that it was it was desperately needed. Now, I do have a question. When was the facility originally constructed? Do you know? Zooming all the time to remember.
I'm not sure if you have the prior estimate of the date.
While we're getting that information, which is good to have, I will say this, I had no doubt when that was built historically, looking back at it. The articles that I've read, I just can't recall the year. They were very excited to have that built. And it met a need at the time. I would say that when they built it, they probably, obviously, because it is in need of long-term repairs, needed more space for a very long time. It wasn't built to meet the growing city that we have here. So when it was originally constructed, everybody was happy about it, but it didn't meet our needs at that time. Or where we're at now, certainly, it 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 has been outdated for longer than a decade and has needed deep repairs. The the main catalyst that swung me on this is public input. The public's opinion matters. We had public outreach on it. We had meetings, people attended. And people from all sorts of different spots within the city, the majority said, expand it beyond what you're doing. We appreciate what you're doing. But let's go beyond that. And the way I look at it is, that matters. That's the public feedback. Now, you have the same A-sayers who didn't want it to be done in the first place or complaining we're spending an extra million dollars. Some of these people don't even live in the city anymore. Why should I listen to that? That should be the driver. It needs to be the move the majority says. And if I look at this, are we building it to meet our current needs or are we building this? Are we keep, when we build this to our current needs, are we factoring in our future needs? This building should be here for decades to come. Thirty years ago, forty years ago, when this was built, I'm imagining it's probably in the thirty to forty-year range. They thought that this would meet the needs and it outproves those needs well over a decade ago. If what we're building now is currently just catching up to our current needs, where is the build-out that allows for our future? I understand, and I I'll be honest with you, that's a great movement. I love baseball. Build it and they will come. That's not a philosophy I usually like to take. But let's think about this one particular project. It's in the center part of our city. It's one of the biggest complaints we have in the city. We don't have enough facilities for all the things that we want to do. We simply don't. Bad decisions made decades ago, poor city planning, that ate up public land that could have been used for the greater good for some of these facilities that we needed makes it very difficult for us to expand. This is an opportunity to do it in million-dollar extra to add this capacity on out as a drop in the bucket when you consider this facility should last just another thirty years. That's nothing. It's gonna meet it now. The same critics are complaining about this. When I say critics, I'm talking a handful of people. Those same people were upset when the Chamber of Commerce had an event outside the city of Deerfield Beach and had a boat or a town or somewhere like that. They said, well, gosh, why can't they do it in the city of Deerfield Beach? Maybe it's because we don't have the facilities to match. Then they tried to point it towards, well, we have Royal Fiesta. Royal Fiesta's been sold, from what I understand. Guess what? You can't rely on it. It's in the central part of our city. It's much needed. It's money well spent. And it's what the majority of the public who attended and engaged in this process has said they wanted to do. It was enough to influence me to go that route. So I'm fully in support of this. I do know this. It is connected to our gymnasium. It's connected to one of our largest parks. If we don't have the need for some banquet space, some meeting halls, or some of these big events like that, I have no doubt we have the creative minds within the city to repurpose some of that space to be used for indoor activities for our kids and the community that desperately need. So I'm fully in support of this. Commissioner Goodak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe the commission voted five-zero to triple the size of the current facility. We all agree, the current facility at six thousand seven hundred square feet is is inadequate. This commission agreed to triple the size of that building to twenty thousand two hundred and seventy-five square feet. That shows tremendous vision. The challenge I have is, again, what Commissioner Drosky just said. You're gonna put another one over over a million dollars so that you can possibly attract one, maybe two parties that are over two hundred and fifty people. And to me, that just doesn't compute. We have the vision to make a beautiful facility. I've seen it. And and there are a lot of things that the public requests for that it would be great if if money was not an option. But in this instance, money is an option. There's over a million dollars that we're proposing to add, was it, a thousand square feet to this facility? To me, that's just not the route to go. A twenty thousand square foot facility replacing a six thousand square foot facility shows tremendous foresight. It shows tremendous commitment to the residents in that area. If you look at the the floor plan, which we've all seen ad nauseam, there are plenty of places for different civic activities to have VSO center there, to have a computer lab there, to have so many options that are not available right now. The facility, as it was originally designed by our current architect, is is a tremendous improvement to what was there. And it shows tremendous foresight for what, you know, the city needs now, as well as needs for the future. I just, I just can't see spending an extra million dollars for a thousand square feet for one or maybe two parties a year, if that. We're comparing ourselves to Boca Raton, which is fifty percent larger than than our city, or De Pompano, which is fifty percent larger to our city. We're neither one of those cities. We're Deerfield Beach. And we need to compare ourselves to us and what our city needs and the vision for our city. And for that reason, I I am not in favor of the expansion of the 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 extra one thousand square feet. I think a twenty thousand two hundred and seventy-five square foot facility for that area is more than adequate for the current needs as well as the needs going into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Goodak. Thank you, Mayor. You know, to my colleagues who are conservative, when it comes to spending, you should be. It is the residents' money that you spend. But but also the resident look at us to be able to look into the future. And available data becomes sometimes our eyes to be able to look and to be able to see those things that may not be present at the time. On Federal Highway in Hillsborough, there's a station, fire station there now. It's Station Four. Many, many years ago, when I joined the fire department, it's Station Four. It was the only fire station in the city of Deerfield Beach. There was a project, I want to just use your imagination for a second. There was a project just in the elementary stages of development. We now know it as Century Village. When that project was just being initiated, we were asked, the fire department anyway, personally, I said, look into the future. That's gonna be nothing but grow out. And you got one station to serve all of those people. And the talks began, and and eventually, the station was was built out there. And it was actually at the time called the Country Club. I went out there many times, served my tour of duty. You could, you had maybe four or five calls out there in one day. Ask Chief Pelletary right now today what that call that call volume is. It started with one rescue. And now you have two rescues running out of there, or at least you did at one time, two rescues running out of there. A cop, an engine, it just grew and grew and grew. And had we waited to say, okay, now the data supports us to build another fire station, we would have been behind. We'd actually spent, ended up spending more money. And so sometimes you don't have that available data and the the support say, hey, this is why we should make this decision now. That that available data allows us to look beyond and say, you know what? We can see what's going to happen here. There's a question that I think is pertinent in this situation, and that is, do we think that Deerfield Beach is going to stay the way that it is before as our residents? And if it's going to stay at this level, then you make a great point. But Deerfield Beach is growing. It's gonna continue to grow. And so we don't need to wait till we get into the law and say, okay, now we can support this. Okay, because look at this. You know, we have to look beyond at times. And this is one of the times that we need to do that. And I would tell you, you go up to Station Four now, it doesn't look anything like it was when I first started. You know why? Because the people came to Deerfield Beach. Its population grew, the demands grew. And if you're not ready for it, when it comes, you're gonna actually be behind and end up spending more money.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Arness.
Building a catering hall or meeting place to three hundred people is a business. How do you get business when you build a place? We happen to have a very, very good department that promotes Deerfield Beach. It's headed by Rebecca Medina. I think that it's gonna be a profitable venture when people realize I've been to the Pompano on Martin Luther King Boulevard, has early voting and events. It's quite large. It's about as old as ours. Maybe a few years younger. Rundown. Not the most modern place. And yet, many functions stay placed there. If we advertise a new facility that can handle three hundred and fifty people with adequate parking, that's the job of our public promotion department. I believe it'll be successful as we grow. And we're not building it for today. We're building it for today and the next twenty to thirty years. So do we wanna just, okay, so we only had two big, three big events last year. Why? Because we don't have the facility. You have a rundown thirty-year-old building with inadequate even restrooms. If you've ever been to the Tignor Center. I wouldn't want to hold an affair there, although I've been to many over the years. This is not a neighborhood thing. This is a citywide thing, just like where we sometimes meet over in the industrial park. in a nice new building. It's not very big, but it's quite comfortable with modern restrooms, adequate parking. Sign of the future, not of the past. This, I believe, will be successful for the city of Deerfield Beach, and it's why I'm supporting it. I'm looking down the road to the future. We start now. Within three or four years, there'll be a waiting list to book because it'll be the most modern, newest building to hold a big event in Northern Broward. And people will use it. I really believe that. So I support it. And if there are no other comments, I'll make a motion to approve.
We still have a few public comment.
Ah, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You, you made a very interesting point. We're, we're not building this facility to make a profit. We're, we're, we're not a business. We're a city. This is a community center that just happens to have a hall in it to hold events. That's the difference. This, this isn't a, 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 a hall. This is a community center for our community that just happens to have a space to hold events. But it's, it's not just a meeting hall there. If, if you look at the blueprint, the blueprints, there's a bunch of functions that happen in this facility day in and day out for the entire community. A meeting hall is just one small fraction of this facility. And it's not being built for profit. It's, 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 it's there to be used by the community, by the citizens. And, and, and if we were building it for, if, if we were building another signature grand in Deerfield Beach where that's all it is, is a meeting hall, I can understand your argument. Yeah, we do the marketing, we, we get all of these events in there and all of that, we, we make a ton of money. But that's not what the idea of this building is. This is a community center that's going to have a, a BSO station. It's going to have a computer lab. It's going to have a place where kids can come after school. And it just happens to have a place where you can hold a gathering. And, and the arguments that we're going back and forth with are, do you want it to have a hall that has a gathering that can hold a maximum of two hundred and fifty people or three hundred and fifty people? So, yeah, if it was just a meeting hall, yeah, you want to make it as big as possible and attract as many people as possible. But it's not just a meeting hall. It's a community center. It's not being built for profit. It's being built to serve our community. And that's where I have the challenge and, and to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hudek. I'm going to open this up to the public. Anyone from the public here comment on the side of my secret Clark Reed.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen Clark Reed, fourteen thirty Southwest Sixth Way. I don't know why I'm hearing commissioners say that this hall is not something that we're building to make a profit or not to have others come in and use it. It's a community center, yes. But it's a community center that has the ability to attract other types of events. Now, Commissioner Hudek, I know that, I don't know how many times in your stay here in Deerfield that prior to you coming on the city commission, you attended events in West Side, which was then West Side Park, Obita McKeaton. When I was a city commissioner, that building was really too small to hold some of the gatherings that we were being asked to have in that building. That community room, as you want to call it, has the ability to attract other folks to come in and use the facility. And let's, let's not say you, it's, you don't want to make money off of that, of that room because you're charging right now to use that room. If that room was only to be for, for the community, really, our taxes then should cover all the uses that are, are being used by the community for that, with that room. It's not. The commission has to understand what that room is and how it can be used. We want to attract people into the city of Deerfield Beach. We want to attract conferences to come in and use that facility. We're not just saying, let's just let Deerfield Beach people use it. Just like Pompano didn't say, let's just let Pompano people use it. We have events that have gone to Pompano. They don't even know possibly that those, some of their events came from Deerfield unless they were told that. We don't know who would have used our facility because the facility, if the facility can't hold the number of people that I want to attract to my event, why am I going to come and tell you, oh, I would rent you a facility, but you don't have the ability to house the number of people that I am looking for? The expansion is needed in that catering facility. Some of our own residents, and I'm talking about residents throughout the city. You, some of you are just sitting there talking about District Two. I can hear it, you are not saying it, but I can hear it when you're speaking. This facility is not a District Two facility.
That's all right. I'm going to give you another minute.
Thank you, Mayor. This facility is not a District Two facility. It is a facility for the city of Deerfield Beach, for the city of Deerfield Beach to use it as best as they see the need to be. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on the side? Not seeing any of my close-ups to the public. I will say this, I don't look at this as a banquet hall. This isn't a banquet hall that we're making a ton of money on. Yes, it doesn't have the potential to do it, absolutely. We look at the facility that was brought up, our technology center located over the whole year from each country club. That facility, that small, nice, modern facility is rented out several times, pre-COVID, several times a week and turned away in the weekend. That's how popular it was. It's brand new and it's already too small for a lot of the things that we needed for it. I think the question, and I, and I get it, and I think all of us, we know that all five of us are agreement that we need to expand this project. We know we need, we were behind it, that's the reason we moved forward with this. And, and yes, we're going three times larger than what it is now. But I think the need currently is probably already close to three times the amount of size. And I, my initial inclination on this was not to go to a million, to add another million dollars to, to the project. But let's be honest, a million dollars for a centrally located community center, the city is desperately, you know, it's going to last us three, four decades. Is not a lot of money. When you look at all the projects we have in the city, where our budget is and everything like that. This isn't some frivolous, let's add gold fixtures to this project on a smaller building that's on one particular side of town that not a lot of people would go to. This is the central part of our city. This will be the largest community center we have. One thing I, if I could be critical of people in the past who sat up here before is their vision for the future was very short-sighted. We have outgrown so many of the public facilities that have, and we are desperately in need of having these types of facilities and a covered facility. Because while we have that land and we have that space, whatever we decide to do on the inside, the change in the future relatively easy compared to adding covered space to that project. It's going to cost us a lot more and it's going to hamstring future commissions and future people in the public who want and have a need for a covered facility there. Let's not do that. Let's spend the money now, have the vision to say, all right, for the next couple of years, maybe we don't fill it to capacity. But I have a strong feeling we're going to figure out a way to do that. There's enough, enough community program we have that we can do that in a central part of our city and a great park that we have, at Obita McKeaton Park. And again, the public has come forward and said, this is how the majority who participated in or engaged from all across the city have come forward and said, we want you to go bigger. That should mean something. The, the public's opinion on this, we asked them to engage, we preach public engagement because we certainly want that, makes our job a lot easier. Why not do it? That swung me to going bigger because I think the need is there, the need will be there in the future. And I'd rather not be short-sighted down to save what is a relatively small amount of money over this long period of time. And I see the city attorneys raising their hands, either I've said something really bad or I've said something really inaccurate, we'll find out.
Neither, Mayor. I just wanted to point out that the architect, Mr. Zachariah, did point out that the warming kitchen was now four hundred and fourteen square feet of additional space. The reso from a couple of weeks ago reflects three sixty-four. So if the commission desire to approve this item, that you do so with, with an amendment, it's in the sixth where it has clause to reflect the four hundred and fifteen square, four hundred and fourteen square feet of additional warming space.
So when I asked to look into whether or not we needed all that warming space, apparently we know it would be, but we needed more of it.
An additional fifty square feet in the contract.
I hope we don't get too hung up on an extra twenty feet on the warming station because I feel like too much of this conversation has been about this being a banquet hall. It's, it's not a banquet hall. This is the finest community center we're going to have and the largest one we have in a growing city, right in the central part of our city. So I think that's well deserved, this extra money, extra space. And I thank the public for helping me see that, so. Closing it to the public, I know Commissioner Parnas asked a couple of times to make a motion. We have a second, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'll say it. The motion has to be amended to include the addition of four hundred and fourteen feet.
Yeah, so just, just for clarification, Commissioner, it would be a, a motion as amended to, to include in the sixth where it has clause to reflect four hundred and fourteen square feet of additional warming kitchen space.
So, so made. It's been seconded by Vice Mayor Preston.
Vice President Preston, second.
Yes, that's second.
We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
No.
Commissioner Hudek?
No. No.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preston?
Yes.
Mayor Mayor.
Yes.
Okay, we are now at comments by administration and legal. Legal has no comments tonight, I'll turn it over to Mayor.
I have no comments this season, but this evening, Mayor.
Let's, uh, this is the commission. Start with District One.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things, State of the City is tomorrow, so I hope individuals have, have gotten their tickets and are looking forward to a great event. And this weekend, we have boots on the beach. So I believe it starts at one o'clock and goes until nine. So I hope we see a, a bunch of our residents on out there, should be a wonderful time. I know we have some great entertainment, so looking forward to that this weekend. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. District Two?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to start by saying that the District Two Buck Pride Community cleanup was a huge success. I'd like to thank staff. We had several meetings about this cleanup to make sure that it went in the proper way. Initially, made the city manager aware of what we were doing, talked about it. Staff was made available. Assistant city manager did an excellent job in making sure that these meetings went in an orderly manner and that we were getting things, you know, get, get set up so that things could get done on that day. We had the cleanup inside, we had that cleanup this past Saturday, and it was just tremendous. Chief Adam Hopstein did an excellent job of making sure that it was a safe environment. We had somewhere in the neighborhood of about sixty, seventy kids out there. And they just did, these kids just did a good job. We had actually cadets from different areas like Sunrise and I forget, there was other areas that we represented as well, who explored. And, you know, we were just, when kids came across the street, patrol officers were there making sure that the environment was safe for them. To do so, all of the equipment that they needed to pick up the garbage was provided. Thank you, staff, a great job. But thank Mr. Wayne Barton, you know, for feeding everybody. He went from nine to twelve and, and there was just a nice kitchen table of food that he provided, no charge. And it was really, really, so successful. I want to say thank you to everyone for such a great job, such a great job. The feedback that I've seen from some of the residents just have been outstanding. You know, they just really talked a lot about what they saw. And I want to do this on an annual basis and come this spring, I'll probably want to duplicate it, but in another area. So in the springtime, we, you know, we'll look at another target zone and, and we'll be able to to duplicate this. Again, staff, thank you so much. We just had Veterans Day, you know, as you remember, last year, I said that we need to do more for Veterans Day and we had a ceremony. And it was really, really nice. Come out, you know, the Brent Hilda notes are, the minute you back there, the first thing that you see was the park was just so clean and so, it was set up nice. Again, staff did a tremendous job of making sure that event, you know, went smoothly. And the way I feel about it, it was just too short. I'm going to ask my colleagues to look at that. We had some commissioners attend. Commissioner Hudek is there, along with Commissioner Parnas. But I know that everybody that sits on this commission is what I would consider a patriot. They care about the community, they care about this country. But after the ceremony was over, there was a man there and he cried. And I just naturally assumed that they were from Deerfield Beach, but they were not. They were from Los Angeles. And the guy was talking about how nice this was and what we did, and he began to cry, that bothered me. And I haven't been able to shake it since that happened. He said that when he came back and, and I'm assuming that was from Vietnam because he was going to be young. He said he was ashamed to say to anybody that he was a veteran. That should never happen. That should never happen. And when he said that, he just began to and that bothered me. Like I said, I just haven't been able to shake it, same that many years after. And so the ceremony that we presented, though appropriate, I don't think really touched the appreciation that we need to show more of that. So I'm just going to ask staff, I'm going to ask my colleagues to just think about that that we had the other day, which was, which was really good. I have no problem with it, but I think we should do more. I told the city manager how I felt about it, what, you know, how we should address, we should do more better. Those are the ones that came back. My opinion, in my opinion, always, when these guys go off in the war, these years, they were. go off the war, it's like America is making a deal with them. You go off and fight in the foreign land and when you come home, we'll take care of you. That's not what's happening. A guy should not be crying and, but ashamed to tell people that he's a veteran. There's a problem with that, and I hope that everybody feels, because we need to change. You know, you know, I don't know what else, but we need to celebrate them a lot more than just the, just the ceremony that we had of that. Again, nothing was wrong with that, that's good. It was well planned, but I just feel that we need to do more, a lot more. And I don't think that we should model ourselves after any other city to say, well, this city does this, that. You know, let's be innovative, let's think outside of the box. You know, maybe whatever we decide to do, others may attach themselves to it. Because Deerfield cares a little bit more than, you know, most cities. So it's just something for staff, my colleagues, even the public, that some ideas given to us on how we can honor our veterans. You proudly handle this hat, but if you wouldn't saw what I saw, you would have been able to talk as I was, people to talk. So please think about that, thank you Mayor.
Thank you, Vice President. Um, Mr. Frank?
Veteran's Day is kind of important to me, I am a veteran. I'm one of the guys who stood on the wall of West Germany when Russia was misbehaving. And we were afraid that we're gonna come across into West Germany. My father fought with Patton. Everyone in my family was in the service during World War Two. Even my aunt was a WAC, worked in Eisenhower's headquarters in North Africa. It was an honor to serve. What tore me up is when I visited Normandy, France. And saw the thousands that were buried there in Europe, World War Two. It touched me deeply. Because when we get into a war, you don't ask the politics of it. There's no right or wrong, there's survival. Keeping your buddies alive as best you can and they keep you alive as best you can. And that we don't really honor those who served bothers me. We should have a, a large celebration of those who came back and served our country. Not for me, I was in peacetime. I stood on the wall, thank God I didn't have to get into combat. We have some veterans that have been in combat doing what the government asked them to do to keep us safe. And as old as I am, war came to this country, I find a way to get my uniform altered, get my old M1 out, do it all over again. Because that's, those who serve think that way. And they're serving their country to protect it. And whether you're a cook, making food for the other GIs or a company clerk that types out paperwork, or you're on the front line, you're all part of one team and they deserve our respect. They deserve to be honored. And I was honored to be asked to be part of the ceremony this Veterans Day. I'd like to see it expanded. I'd like to even see a parade perhaps for veterans and their families given to this country. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner, District Four?
Thank you Mayor, I'd like to first start tonight by thanking the countless volunteers who participated in the Haunted Arboretum out in District Four at Constitution Park. October thirtieth was the arboretum and there were sixty to seventy volunteers for the event, mostly from our local high schools that participated and our service clubs. And I know we sent out certificates to all of them because the event would have been too much to hold on a Zoom meeting. We would still be reading their names right now if we had to do that. But I, I want to thank them all and they know who they are for volunteering and making that such a great event. I don't know how Parks does it, I, I thought the year before COVID, when they did it, that there was no way they were gonna outdo themselves and this year they, they proved me wrong. So I, I want to see what they're gonna do next year because the bar is even higher now. So game, game on, they've got a whole year to think about it, but they've got a, a big project ahead of them. My next Saturday office hours is December fourth. We don't have a meeting before then, so that is from twelve to noon. The appointments are virtually or by, by phone, so you can contact me directly or the city manager's office to schedule that, that's Saturday, December fourth. The next, the next item I have Mayor is I know that you and Vice Mayor Preston were personal friends with John Chikorodis. I've had a couple of District Four residents reach out to me that knew him from his patrolling duties, especially in, in District One. And they inquired if there's any naming opportunities or opportunities for the city to remember him or do something for him in all of the years that he served Deerfield Beach. I, I read the obituary again, it said thirty-five years in, in the obituary. That's a lot of time for Deerfield Beach. And even though he wasn't a Deerfield Beach resident, he served our community proudly with distinction for a long period of time. And I, I was approached by, by residents that wanted me to bring this up to my colleagues to see what your temperature was, that if an opportunity came up in the future to keep John Chikorodis in, in mind. So I, I just throw that out there as, as food for thought for you going, going forward. Next is a pretty, a pretty big deal, actually. We have nominated for December, the city of Deerfield Beach for our Deerfield Beach Memorial Day video. It is nominated for a national award by the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. That is a big deal, and so we are one of two in the, in the running for that. Rebecca Medina and Dave Hunt, who, they do an absolutely fantastic job from our information. The Public Information and Marketing Office, I, I, we all say what a great job they do. All the videos that you see online, on Facebook and, and anywhere else you see them, they come from that particular department. They do great work and one of them is actually up for a, a big awards. The, the revealing is in December, I, I, I hope they win it. And we'll, hopefully we'll have the information to, you know, the good news later, but I wish them, I wish them well and, and good luck with that, that's really big news for Deerfield Beach. And last but not least, before our next meeting, which is on December seventh, we're gonna have the Thanksgiving holiday as well. And so we have a lot to be thankful for in this country. So grab your loved ones, you know, tell them you love them and just be thankful for all the blessings that we have. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you Commissioner. Couple of things in common to what has been said tonight by our colleagues. First, I, I'm so glad that all of you were able to attend the Veterans Day. Unfortunately, I was unable to, but I am greatly appreciative of not just those that attended, but those who served. So Commissioner Partus, Commissioner Houdak, the manager, thank you for your service. And, well, I, I have no problem expanding what we're doing for Veterans Day. I think parades are something of the past, I don't think it's something that draws the same crowds. The numbers are down, but I think if you create and figure out a good way to be able to do it, to expand it, to give them that credit they richly deserve, so I love that. Very touching what you said about the gentleman that attended that event from outside of our city. As far as naming something after Chick, as somebody who knew him personally, and I'm sure Vice Mayor would agree with me, if anything, I would have been teasing Chick, saying, I'm gonna name a urinal after you, buddy. Which would have been right up his speed and he would have loved that. I'll, I'll leave that to others to decide, but he's, you know, I certainly have personal bias, but take away my personal bias of knowing him personally, absolutely richly deserving, so I would be in full support of something like that for him. And, and the problem is, he's covered so many areas of the city of Deerfield Beach, it's kind of hard to figure out where he can do it because he has so many areas in this city. One thing I want to throw out, we're talking about water quality. As many of you know, the, the city of Fort Lauderdale ran into a lot of problems with water quality issues and with sewage leaking into the waterways and all of the problems that they had over the past couple of years. One of the things that came out of that as a way to try to treat the pollution problem they have in their waterways was create their, a company kind of sprung up from that. It's called Clean Waterways LLC. And it, it was an idea that was created essentially as a protein skimmer. It's a large protein skimmer, it's, it's a barge that operates just like if you do a high end aquarium as a protein skimmer, there's no chemicals. The air and water is really what's needed, the bubbles through some sort of electrolysis process, I believe, bond with the pollution, leaves the plankton in the water, but that bonding there, the pollution is then removed. That, that pollution is then easy to remove at that point. And one of the other neat things about this, this barge that they use, it also pinpoints the area of pollution, so you can actually go out and one, either solve the problems where the pollution's coming from or two, target the people that are causing the problem. So I know it's being used in Fort Lauderdale. It's a good test pilot to see how well it does, maybe it's something staff can look into, find out if something possibly we could use in our waterways. Since we're making a strong commitment to do a sawgrass, sea grass exploratorium. And we're talking about improving our water quality. This might be a good step in that direction to look into, and so that's just something I read about online. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving. People out there that are driving crazy through our city, let's, let's hope that they realize there is a lot to be thankful for and will be slowed down and take some time to enjoy that. So for everything that all of you have done, thank you so much, I'm grateful, thankful, deserved my honor. Without looking for a motion.
Motion with your.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.